Welcome to tonight's meeting of the North Rose Wocat Central School Board of Education meeting. If some of you were, were looking forward to us being in person at the, the Wocat Middle School, I apologize for having to change things around. But at the time, the decision had to be made, Wocat was still having difficulties with their electricity due to the ice storm. And at the time we made the decision, that we had to make the decision, it was too iffy for us to take a chance of having a problem if we went in person. Hopefully, their problems are all solved by now. Because I'd hate to have someone going into the evening without electricity. With that said, I will call tonight's meeting to order. First order of business is to salute the flag. So please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A motion please to approve tonight's agenda. Jason and John, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion is passed. Thank you. Tonight, we have some presentations. For the public information. The board is always interested in having presentations to be knowledgeable about what's going on in our school and out and about. Although the board always functions according to school law from an oversight view, not an operational view. We still like to know what's going on. And I will say that this is individually a very informed board. So I thank Mr. Pollan for that, for keeping us in the loop at all times. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Pollan, to introduce tonight's presentations.
Great, Mrs. Collier. So we're going to start with our team from DGA Builders. You might see some unfamiliar faces and I'm going to give the gentlemen a chance to explain who they are and what they're bringing to the table on behalf of the district and our residents. With us tonight, AJ, Mike and Chris from DJ. Mike, I'm going to give it to you, let you be the primary and then introduce Chris and AJ if you would.
Okay, thank you very much. Nice to meet everybody. My name is Mike Nikasia. As you know, I'm with DJ Builders. I am a project superintendent. We have AJ Pashi, who's project manager with us, and we also have Chris Treuer. He is our project executive for our capital improvement project. Looking forward to getting started as soon as we can. Bids come in next week. After that, we have to make the decision on where we're going, who we're picking. And hopefully, everything comes in as planned, under budget, and we can get going. The one thing that's going to depict everything for as far as starting, I just thought I'd let you all know now is a lot of items are long lead items, and there's nothing that any of us can do about that. So based on how the bids come in, what we think and what we're actually doing, and how long it's going to take to get those items, then we will go through and set up a schedule and pick the best time to start. Not too early or not too late. So.
And I just, I just want to jump off what Mike said, you know, we're here with the DGA team, Mike, myself and Chris. And we're here to deliver you guys a great project. So it's nice to see some new faces out of all of you. And we look forward to the project and look forward to working with you guys through this whole thing.
The board members, as you heard Mike say, next week, the bids for the capital project that we voted on and the public approved in 2021 will be unsealed. So we'll go ahead and start really putting our heads together and figuring out what that schedule looks like, really start addressing some of the items on that list. You'll know this is phase two and phase three of the project. Phase one was the roof part. We were able to go ahead and tackle the roof over the high school gymnasium. We were able to tackle the roof above the maintenance facility as well. But the bulk of the work is really coming in the next two phases. That's where the concession stand, the bleachers, the press box, the windows at the elementary, a lot of that work is really going to come about in this next phase, the auditorium, things of that nature. So as Mike said, you know, their team has been keeping us informed. You guys met with SCI last week during the workshop portion. So you know, John, Paul and Sarah, this group here, they're really going to be overseeing the construction side of things and working with us and keeping us apprised. And as they indicated, they're looking forward to delivering a strong product and they understand some of what we're up against. Because of the, the past challenges we've had with the Leavenworth project. So we've kept them apprised. I think for our purposes, we meet about every other week and have been doing so since probably, I would say, last spring. And really starting to pick up the intensity of the meetings and the length of those meetings and really looking forward to next week. And we're optimistic that we're going to get some competitive bids in. But also, we want to be realistic with the escalation of price because of supply chain interruptions and because of long lead items. So things that we anticipated, we would have already been in the thick of, you know, due to approval at the state ed level and for our own intentionality. We're, we're opening those bids next week and we'll, we'll come up with a schedule, we'll be pretty aggressive. And the administrative team here is understanding of that and is willing to put in the time and effort necessary to be flexible. So construction could continue throughout the school year so that we could deliver the best product to our community. So are there questions from the board? And you know, these gentlemen were prepared to come down tonight, meet you in person, but you know, because it's not, you know, the best of weather and the power outage at the middle school, they did jump on online. So I look forward to you all meeting them in person in the near future. Mike, Chris and AJ, I will let you get on with the rest of your evening. Really appreciate you taking the time to say hello to our board. And I think you're going to find they're a very involved board. They're very committed and they are looking forward to a win just as much as you are.
For sure.
Okay.
We will, we, we Yeah, we will do our very best. And you know, we look forward to a successful project.
All right.
We do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night, guys. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. So Mrs. Collier, we're going to keep it all moving. As you can see, you know, we have Mr. Miskel, who is the director of four county school boards on tonight. And he's been asking to present to us for some time and we're lucky and thankful for having him with us tonight. We also gave him the courtesy of the, the online presentation. And I think it worked out really well. So I'm hoping that at some point in time collectively, between school boards at North Rose Wocat and the four county, it might be something that we plug the state ed because I think in our experience, we've had more participation in the virtual world than we do sometimes in person. But I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Miskel and let him speak to you a little bit about four county and his role and what he might be able to provide for all of us.
Well, thank you Superintendent Pollan and President Collier. Really happy to be here with you tonight, if only virtually. You know, I have been very interested in visiting North Rose Wocat for some time now. I had a goal for myself to visit all 21 of our component school districts this year. And you were on my calendar earlier in the year and then I tested positive for COVID, had to reschedule. And so, but I'm really happy to be here, here with you tonight. I was a little nervous this morning because there was a thick coat of ice on my car, you know, when I woke up this morning. And so when Tina offered the Zoom option, I thought, well, that's probably a good idea, given the weather circumstances. I appreciate this opportunity. But you folks are fantastic participants in the four county school boards association. You know, you, you're, I think you're well familiar with our primary mission, which is the training and advocacy. You know, I think probably the best program we've had in terms of training was the one that Superintendent Pollan and Superintendent Hasenar from Newark put on recently and safety and security. I got so many positive comments about that. And people actually said to me, this is the best program ever. So I'm so grateful to that, to that effort Superintendent Pollan. And looking forward to next month when you folks present again and for our first annual spring conference, we're excited about this. So thank you for all your work that you put into that as well. And your board is really active, you know, in our committee work, you know, in our policy and legislative committees. And again, that's so, so much appreciated because it's hard work. And you know, it's, it's a quite a contribution when you agree to meet people on a Saturday morning or an evening over Zoom and, you know, work on behalf of the association. So it's kind of nice. And I'm finishing up my goal of meeting with all the boards with you folks tonight because you're such a great board. So supportive. I couldn't be more happy with the relationship that we have, you know, the fork between four county and North Rose Wocat. So I, you know, you probably don't need to hear another, any more spiel from me because you're very well familiar with what we do because you're so active. But do you have any questions for me this evening?
I'm, I'm very happy, Stephen, that you, you saved the best for last.
President Collier.
And we're very happy that Linda has represented our board, both on the board of directors and on the legislative committee. And she does get back to us to tell us what's going on and what we should be thinking about or asking for input. So, and we too have enjoyed our meetings because the one thing that we always take away is that we always learn something.
Right.
Even if we're quite informed about the subject that you're presenting that night, there's something to be learned. And that's, that's really important. So we're very happy to have the fourth county and to be part of it.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the support from all of you, President Collier and without, I guess I'll leave it on a high note. Thank you for that. And hope you all have a pleasant evening today and a safe drive. Well, it looks like you're all home anyway. You're all home safe.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Oh, my pleasure. Good to see you.
Please, Steve, I wanted to say thank you too, because it has been a wonderful experience for me, working with folks from four county and connecting with people from all over the four county area because you learn so much from them and you get more information that way. We also have tidbits we can take back and, and think about when we're working together as a board. And sharing that information is important. I actually have information about NISBA Lobby Day on the 15th. And I'll be sharing either tonight or some other time with the board.
Thank you, Linda. It's, it's a pleasure to work with you. Thank you so much.
Jason, did I see your hand up? No? Oh, okay.
Paul, Paul hit his hand up. Send him up.
Oh, Paul. Okay. Sorry, Paul. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, Steve, but we still want you to come out to our district. Oh, I'd love to. Yes. Look at our buildings, look at our facilities. So great to have you tonight, but please come out. Thank you, Paul. I'd love to do that. I really appreciate you saying that.
When the apple blossoms are in bloom would be a nice time.
Well, I love that idea. Okay. So I'll come back to spring.
All right.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. So as Mr. Miskel gets off, just to kind of highlight what he was referring to, four county and rural schools association is having a joint professional development day on March 24th. That one is going to focus on safety, security and mental health awareness. So that really should be a great afternoon. And it's, it's nice because they anticipate 200 people coming into our, our area to participate in that workshop that'll be held at the BOSI's Conference Center. So that's something that I think should be a really, really good day. And the panel of presenters is pretty comprehensive. So everything from a review of the Parkland incident and the critical nature of what, what occurred there and what needed to occur there and how to prevent things from that. Matt Morelli is coming into town. Heather Harris coming into town. I know our board was present when they were a part of a panel in the fall, but they're going to expand on that. And we have some other guest presenters talking about school bus safety as well. And then two members of state ed. So if you haven't seen that flyer, Tina can get it out to all of you if there's interest from board members. But other than that, should be a good day. And you know, the, this presentation that's coming up next is Megan Palliati, our assistant superintendent for instruction. She's going to give you the mid-year review with respect to data. And I think that what you're going to see is a pretty comprehensive look of all that's been happening in our district under her leadership. So I'm going to turn it over to Megan and, you know, I'll mute if she has questions or comments or things that, you know, board members want elaborated on, you know, Megan and I will be happy to do that for you.
Mike, can you guys see the presentation? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So I know you've been able to hear from each of the buildings about their school improvement plans. And so this is really just a mid-year update, a kind of a district level view of how we're doing with those community promises that are part of our strategic action plan. So the first area I want to focus on is partnerships. We are very excited about our new partnership that we've just established with Reliant Credit Union. They're coming in once a week to our middle school seventh graders to teach a financial literacy class. So this is something that we, they've teamed up with us to actually come out for professional development days for our teachers and now having them come right in and work with our students is something we're very excited about. You've heard me talk about Atlas for the past couple of years as the place where we put all of our curriculum maps and our pacing guides, they're stored in there. And our teachers have been working to get everything in there. And we are just about ready to launch that so that it goes public. And what that means is there's certain parts of the site that parents will be able to go in and really see, you know, if my student is a first grader, what they're doing in math at a certain time of year, you can go in and see the curriculum that they'll be working on. Just allows parents to have a little bit more transparency to see what's going on at school and to support their child at home with extra practice if they want to do that. Another partnership that we're very excited about that we have continued for multiple years is our partnership with Rotary. We do try to have someone from the school attend each week to the Rotary meetings. And Rotary for years has participated in honoring a student of the month where they invite the student and their parents and typically a counselor or administrator from their building to come speak about the student. And they get to have lunch with the Rotary and they receive a little cash gift to honor the different attributes that that student shows that really matches up with Rotarians. In addition to that, we are also doing another project this year with Rotary and our technology class in the high school where they are building a swing for Marshall Park. So that's going to be exciting to see that finished. And then the last area of partnerships that I wanted to focus on is that we have had multiple graduates reach out to us. Students that, they're adults now, but they were students here at North Rose Wocat and they're working or have their own businesses in the area. So as you can see, those different companies have reached out to us. And they're very interested in either having our students go out there for field trips to learn about what they do there or to start hosting student workers. So we're really excited about making those connections with our local graduates. The next area I wanted to focus on is equity. So we continue to use our panorama surveys to get a general sense of how students are doing socially and emotionally across the district. But they also allow us to dive a little bit deeper into individual student needs. So we can look at that data in two different ways. And those are given a couple of different times of year where students answer different survey questions and we can see how they're doing. It allows us to create some interventions for students who might be struggling in different areas. In addition to that, this year we worked on updating our dignity for all students act form. And this is a form that now is available for parents just to go right to the website. And they can fill it out and it goes directly to the DASA coordinator of the district. And then it's distributed to the, the building DASA coordinators. And then they can look into any complaints that come in. In the past, it was a difficult, more of a difficult process where parents had to print out the form, fill it out and then get it into school. So this is just a nice, really quick way that they can go on and it gets sent directly to the school. We're continuing to use Parent Square and Propio to be able to communicate with parents in whatever their home language is. And they can set that up so it comes to them in the way that they will understand information the best. We're very excited still about having conferences for all learners. So typically you would think of as students get a little bit older, you might only have a conference if a student is struggling. But we're happy to have parent conferences available at nighttime for, you know, our three-year-olds, all the way up to our high school students. So that parents who want to be involved and know how their students are doing can set up a conference and meet with teachers. And then this year, we have the district newsletter, which is really a compilation of all the different buildings, information of what's going on. It's going out to everybody so they can see the great news and the good things that are happening in the district. In the past, that wasn't really put together all in one place. And so now we have Amanda Hogan, who does our public relations, really creating that for us and making a very cohesive piece of information to go out to everyone in the district. Our next community promise is social emotional. So just recently, the social emotional learning benchmarks were revised and released. And so this is something that we've looked at, at Leadership Council, which is our administrators and our lead teachers to really look at these and see what we can do to implement them into our school day. The interesting part about this is that typically when benchmarks or standards come out, it's focused just on the students in the school. But the social emotional learning benchmarks actually have a section for adults to make sure that we are looking at how the adults that are working in our buildings are doing socially and emotionally. And also to allow us to look at that and see how we're doing, do some self-assessment and then figure out how we can provide support. So that's a really unique thing that's a part of these that I hadn't seen before. We have our upcoming March Professional Development Day. At that day, we're going to have a mixture of curriculum and assessment development balanced out with some different social, emotional and wellness pieces for our staff. So it should be a day that things are a little bit balanced and they get, get feel accomplished by getting some work done, but then also are able to have some team building and fun with their coworkers. We've seen restorative practices really be something that's had a positive impact, especially at the middle school level. As some of you may know, Crystal Rupp really brought with her some great knowledge about restorative practices. And she put them right into play in their daily use at the middle school. And the other buildings are really starting to tap into that knowledge and those practices to use at their buildings as well. So that's something that we're seeing really start to expand this year. And we're really excited to keep learning from each other and watching that grow. And then the last area of social emotional, we're continuing to do for you Friday for our staff, which is a Friday where students are sent home, they're not kept after. And there are different wellness activities planned for staff to engage in if they choose to. So some staff, they feel better if they can just get work done, but other staff do partake in doing a physical activity or a mental activity with their coworkers. And that's something that we've seen people have enjoyed. And then before faculty meetings, our principals have been holding circles where staff literally sits in a circle and a subject is brought up and they kind of go around. And you can either share information that you want to share or you can pass and just listen. And it's a way to really connect with other people and get to know the people that you work with. For our academic community promise, as you've probably heard across the region, there has been a large shortage in substitute teachers. And Mr. Prince has done an amazing job of getting us more subs this year, but it seems that there's never enough to cover the absences that we have. So one thing that I thought was really interesting is when the teacher's contract was most recently finalized, a piece was added in there to allow staff to give up their planning period in order to cover another teacher's class if it needed to be covered. They do get compensated for this. And what we found was that we had 173 periods in the first half of the year that teachers took advantage of this, which is a huge benefit to us because that way a certified teacher is in the classroom and students are still being able to move forward with some really great teaching. And on top of that, which I didn't even put in here, is our administrators have been filling in classrooms too. So even in addition to the 173 periods that the, the teachers have been in there, administrators have been stepping in. Everybody's been pitching in just to continue that quality learning for students when we do have absences. Our professional development offerings have really taken off with our instructional coaches that we have at each building. They've done a really wonderful job at taking different topics and providing professional development for after-school time and asynchronous time so that staff can stay after, have direct teaching, have some time to work on things. But then also for people who might not be able to stay after, there's an option that they can go on and go through it on their own and really learn the pieces and create something. And then they turn it in to kind of prove that they've gotten through that course. So being very creative with how we offer that to staff so they can really access it in multiple ways. Our curriculum articulation plan is complete for the next five years. We do have an area, every single content area and grade level over the next five years has a date that they will, it will be looked at and revised. And as you know, over the past couple of years, it's really just been pushing to get everybody to get their curriculum written, to get it into Atlas. And what we're doing now is just some more specific revisions and getting on a schedule where we can really focus in on a couple of areas each year instead of it being such a big push for the whole, the whole piece of every single content area of curriculum to be revised. And then also we're using district-wide data memos. What this is, is that each staff member at the end of each quarter gets a data memo to show how their students are doing. It'll show their students proficiency, students that have mastery. And then they look at their data, they reflect upon it and then set a goal for how they're going to move students ahead. So this is something that all the, the administrators are giving their teachers and that they're reflecting on and going through that practice. So addition to talking to you about the academic piece, I wanted to show you some data. I know the board had asked for multiple points of data. And so, for example, the first school improvement plan by the elementary school, they showed you some of the Ames Web data. This last time they went more towards the report card data. And now I'm going to show you more of kind of an overview for each building. So just to orient you to what we're looking at here, this is for the elementary school. This is for math and this is the Ames Web data. You can see for fall, 22 students were given the Ames Web math piece. And then we're just giving it again in the winter. You can see that each grade level has made some really great gains. And this is the percent of students who are proficient in each grade level right now. So we're making some positive progress in each grade level. This is the same, same timeline for reading with Ames Web. You can see again that from the fall to the winter, each grade level has increased their level of percent of students who are proficient in the areas they're measuring for reading. In the areas they're measuring for reading. This shows us our oral reading fluency. It shows that, you know, in the fall for each grade level there that takes the oral reading fluency. The fall numbers of proficiency. And then again, the winter, each went up. The Ames Web ORF, words per minute, it's oral reading fluency, words per minute. That's what those, all those abbreviations are. This is what Ames Web says students should be able to read words per minute. At each grade level. And then you can see for our North Rose Wilket average for each grade level. First grade's a little bit ahead with reading more words per minute. The other grade levels are lagging behind a bit. So we'll be looking at how to improve that over the next two quarters. And then I'm also going to be showing you just a snapshot of behavioral data for each building. Mr. Pullen has asked the principals to present a more comprehensive presentation for you in the coming months about behavioral pieces and discipline data. But just as a quick overview, you can see from twenty-one is the light green to twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two to this year, twenty-two, twenty-three is the dark green. And you can see, and it was a little bit higher in the beginning months and then it kind of just went down a little and then it evened out. One thing that when we dive deeper into this data, we see is it's typically a handful of students who have recurring discipline referrals who are really our highest need students. So it's not really forty-three different students. It might be, you know, a handful that have difficulties over and over that we're still trying to figure them out and get them the support they need. So here's our middle school math Ames Web information. For each grade level, you can see in the fall that was their proficiency weight rate. And for the winter, again, each of the grade levels has increased with their proficiency rate. And then again, for reading, you can see each of the grade levels for fall and for winter. Each of those has gone up except for eighth grade. And what we've noticed there is that we need to really strengthen our tier-one instruction. At the eighth grade English level and we're working on that right now. With really revising some of those maps, making sure we're hitting the standards and making sure students are really practicing those skills. That they need to be successful for when they head into high school. So that is a recognized area of need and we do have a plan in place for that. And then this is the percent of students that received an eighty-five percent or higher in their grades for quarter one and quarter two. And then the referral data for the middle school. This is very interesting information to look at because what you need to really think about is that it's a completely different system. Last year, how referrals were made to how they're made this year. So even though we're comparing it, it really isn't comparable because it's a very different system where last year, teachers just made referrals when they were having difficulty with students and needed some administrative support for that. This year, it's a system where students are sent to a specific location. The reason for what they're struggling with is really figured out and then they're sent to either get some counseling support. Or things are recovered and they're, they head back to the room. Or in the most severe cases, there is a discipline referral written after they've met with an administrator. And so it's a much more controlled system for the discipline referrals to go in. And that's why it looks like it's decreased so much. However, overall, I, I think some of you have heard from the perception data that it does feel a lot different in the middle school as well with the new systems that have been put in place. And then for the high school, we have the quarter one and quarter two percent of students who have received an eighty-five percent or higher for their grades. And then we want to talk a little bit about the January regions. Ninety-four students challenged the January regions in sixty-nine percent score proficient. For the students who did not, they'll have the opportunity to take that again in June. And then all of the other January regions exams really only had one to four students challenge it. None of those students did pass those. The reason the numbers are so low as far as who challenged it is because the appeal process was still in place for COVID. And so a lot of students got credit for those tests. Just by making it through the courses. And so that's why we didn't have a lot that challenged it in January at this time. We're planning to have more students challenge it in January. So students can get that out of the way and pass. That's one thing off their plate as they move through the rest of the school year in the future. We do have good news with January graduates. We have two, one student was an early completer. And another student completed through the Cougar Apps program. And then again, looking at the high school referral data, you can see it started to go down a little bit in November and December. Went back up in January. We again have a plan in place for this where we're really looking at our tier-one structures. Consistent expectations across grade levels, across the building. And we are having support from Bosse's to come in and work with us on some of our MTSS processes at the high school as well. In order to try to get more consistent with that across the grade levels, teachers and content areas. And students sometimes mix into all different ones depending on what classes they have to take. And then financially, as far as our community promise for that. We have recently taken an inventory of the digital resources that teachers and students are using. During COVID, we tried to get our hands on as many things as possible for students to have access to that. And now that we have really kind of evened out with in-person and and digital teaching, we see what ones really benefit our students the most. And so by taking that inventory, we are able to stop purchasing ones that aren't being widely used in order to free up money for other things that may be more efficient for students. Our coaching model that I had talked about as far as our instructional coaches. Along with not having a lot of subs, we are able to send our instructional coaches for training and then they come back and they turnkey the trainings. That way we don't have teachers out of the classroom, gone for trainings. And we can really provide that, like I had said, for after-school time so that we're not taking teachers away from students. We revised our field trip request form. In the past, that was a system that really bypassed my office. And looking at it, it has a piece in there to connect it to the curriculum, which is very important to make sure we're spending money and that everything aligns. So there's a piece now where I get to review that, the principal reviews it, and then the business office. Again, with narrowing what content areas and grade levels we're going to focus in on in the next five years. We're going to be able to narrow our curriculum writing focus and what money we're going to spend towards that. We're really going to narrow what's going to be approved for summer work. So that we can really make a concerted effort to focus our fiscal our resources right towards those specific things that we're working on in that year. And then we're redesigning our summer offerings. In the past, we've had a very robust enrichment program. And we do want to continue those for students. However, with the twenty-first century funding going away. We really have to look at what we're offering students first academically and then some enrichment. But being creative with what we're going to offer and being fiscally responsible with that. And that's all that I have. If anybody has any questions.
Megan?
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation. It was informative. The discipline referral program or model that we're using. It seems like it's different from each building. Does that make it tougher for students to transition from the elementary school to the middle school and then middle school to high school? To accurately gauge how the long-term discipline is trending per se?
So we haven't seen that yet because this is the first year that the middle school has been doing it this way. One thing we do know is for our eighth grade students, it has been a successful way to really support them with what they need in that moment. So instead of just getting sent to the office, if they really need more of like a counseling situation, we can parse that out and give them what they need. So we've been talking about how we can replicate something that's more supportive as they transition up to ninth grade. Because we do worry about that going from such a supportive piece to giving them what they need when they do transition between buildings. So it's not something we've seen yet, but we do anticipate that we need to plan for that.
Thank you.
So Jason, do you have another question?
No, thank you.
Megan, I've got a couple of questions. It's Shelley.
Yep.
So one of the surveys that the students take is, is it just students that take, complete the surveys or is it, who else completes the surveys?
The panorama surveys are just the students.
Okay. Is that ever shared with the board or shared in any way?
We haven't shared it out. What we do is look at it to create interventions. If there's information that you'd be interested in as far as the areas that we measure on that, we could definitely share that. Because we, when we're creating those surveys, we have to pick district-wide. What areas we want to focus on to ask our students about.
Yeah, that for me would be interest, I would be interested to understand what the questions are. Just to have some reference. Another question I have is the with the atlas and the curriculum maps. So the vertical alignment between elementary, middle and high, how is that happening?
So right now we're focusing on alignment within the buildings. And then the next step will be between the buildings. So in March, right now, we do have our principals are offering times within the school day. That teachers are doing vertical alignment within the buildings. And then our March PD day. Also will focus on that, except for our specials that go K-12. We have those teachers getting together in March so they can really look at their piece across the buildings. But first, we need to get that good vertical alignment from one grade level to the next within the buildings. But that is on our list to go between buildings in the next step.
And then just to piggyback on Jason's question about the behavior expectations. Have you, is there thought about looking at the MTSS process K-12? Really focusing on the academic expectations and behavior expectations vertically?
Yeah, so we, with our Cougar Pride traits, we do all use those consistently month to month. The whole district does. So the Cougar Pride trait that's focused on for specific month, it's consistent across the buildings. As well as those learning behaviors that we expect of students, those go along with that as well. In addition to that.
How is the staff trained though to have the same expectations?
Well, I think that's part of the question that the, I want the principals to answer for you all as a board as well, Shelley. So when we started to go through this a little bit at council. We noticed there are discrepancies amongst the buildings. And we want to bring that to the board and we want to highlight some of the work that we're doing for more consistency and continuity. So that I think we can expect an answer to when they do present the data to you. Because I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong. The concern is if we don't have a level of engagement at tier one. And kids are out and about and they're causing chaos, then it's going to continue to disrupt the academic process. And then we're going to continue to see the referrals escalate. And if people don't have clear understanding of what's expected of them. It's just a vicious cycle. Am I understanding that correctly?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's my understanding. Yes.
Mine, mine too. So that's one of the things that I want the principals to present to you all. Because to me, that's, that's a frustration. So I think to piggyback on your question about the vertical alignment. You know, a few years ago, we had curriculum. We didn't have curriculum maps. So it was a priority in twenty-twenty to put them on maps. Right? To make sure we're, we're putting everything that we're expected to measure in one place so that everybody has access to it at the same point in time. And so now we're getting into those pacing guides that Megan talked about. And making sure that Atlas Live goes out so that parents understand how to hold us accountable. And so we're squeezing it from the academic side, but I would also say to you, we're squeezing it from the behavioral side also because again, you can't have one without the other. And if our kids aren't engaged. You know, the chances are the referrals are going to go through the roof. So those expectations are clear and, and I do think you know, with more consistency and higher expectations, the more likely we're going to achieve the academic results that our community expects. So they, they will present that to you because I do believe you know, it's going to be a much more extensive conversation than just what we're highlighting tonight. And you all deserve that. So does our community.
Well, I, I do think that, you know, it sounds like the focus is going to be on really strong instructional practice. Because as you've said, if you don't have strong instructional practice. And it's known by all of our staff, what those strong, and I believe that they have them. That's not, I'm not implying they don't. It's what's the expectation that, that we have from a district level? To make sure that everybody's on the same page because if that's happening, then the behavior should go down.
Correct. Yep. We, I, I, I didn't think you were implying one way or another. I just wanted to make sure from my understanding. Because I thought that's what you were leaning toward, but I agree with you. And I think that that's an expectation that all of our administrators have as well. So you, you'll hear about that in the near future when they present that stuff to you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Very comprehensive. Thank you.
Paul?
In the elementary school, about two years ago, we started a program and I'm trying to remember what it was.
Collaborative classroom?
Thank you. That's exactly what it was. How's that coming along and are we transitioning that to the middle school?
So that is going well at the elementary school. They have implemented actually all components of that. And this year, they even component, added a component of character add in that, which is called caring classrooms as well. For the middle school, it had a harder time taking off to be honest, as far as fully implementing. So there's pieces that have been implemented. But in learning, working with collaborative classroom this year, they just let us know that they're actually not going to be doing it with sixth grade anymore. And so we're working on how that transition's going to look from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade and on up. To make sure that we're taking those practices that they're learning. And really being able to use that, but making sure we're really aligning the curriculum five through eight as students go through. So there's not any gaps there.
Okay, thank you both. John, you had your hand up?
Yeah, it has to do with Ames Web. Why is it, and this is probably an elementary question. In the fall, almost all the scores for all the grade levels by the testing is low. And then they make gigantic moves upward. Is it because of summer, the lapse in school in the summer that they, they come in low? They, meaning the test results.
It could be. Usually students do show some sort of regression over the summer. And also it takes them, I think, a little bit, a while into the school year to really get the pace. And the hang of really even taking the testing well. Because there's a component of that to it as well. So by the time they're to the winter, I think they're back in the groove of learning. They've caught back up from what they've lost in the summer and they have a better understanding because they've already taken the test once to how to do that.
The other part, John, just to piggyback on that comment. You know, against the national norms, that's how our kids fare. Right? So what we're really trying to push for is some local norming as well. You know, if you think about, this program hasn't been implemented very long here. But now we're to the point where we've collected enough data where I'd like to see North Rose Wilket specific benchmarks for pre-K, K, one, two, three, four, and so on. So that's a piece where we're going to get that push. Because I think that that true data in comparison to our own standard with our own students, with our own staff is really going to help. You know, because going back to the tier-one component. When we talk about reading instruction at its primary level. It's always great to compare toward a national benchmark. But I really would like to see, are they making adequate progress according to what our standard is as well? So we're not quite there yet. And I mean, it's a part where again, in year, we're in year three. You know, two and a half right now with some of these protocols. But I do believe that's the next, next step for us. And we'll be able to measure whether some of that summer recess does contribute to summer regression in terms of their automaticity and their fluency.
Do they also give an item analysis to teachers?
They do, so they, they get information about each skill. And then students who are severely delayed actually get progress monitored each week to make sure they're making progress on that skill. That we're providing the intervention for, where students who are on target get progress monitored at a longer stretch.
And what's the relationship between Ames Web in winter versus the state testing? And I know one's standardized and one is not, you know, and they change with the wind. But is there any, have you found any relationship between those testings?
Not completely closely yet, it's not something that we really have taken a dive into. I think with COVID happening, when we were implementing this, it was a little bit trickier. So hopefully over the next couple of years, we can see if there's a correlation there when we get some real solid data.
Well, and the other part for us is really from a, a practical standpoint. You know, we understand fluency is the gateway to comprehension. So the more fluent our readers are, the more their comprehension should rise as well. So I think that that's also a piece to say that these are practices that we know will be good in all content areas. Not specifically referenced toward a standardized assessment, you know, that, that really is our goal.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, thank you, Megan.
Thank you, everyone. As I sat here listening to the questions, I, I can't help but think. This board is. I, I, I think this board is different than many boards because there's so many educators on it. I'm hearing very specific questions and. And I have to say, I think that's good. But on the other hand, I think, oh, that's not the forty thousand foot view. That the state ed says boards are going to have, should have. So I think. I think this is a very unique board in that it does have educators who can ask specific questions and understand that. I think a lot of boards don't have that and. Good or bad, that's wonderful, I.
I, I would hope, I would hope that we think it's really good. Because I, I think that our, I think our job is to help and to bring information forward. That's going to help us be the best school we can be. So that's, that's our goal.
All right, let's move on to reports and correspondence. Paul, is there anything you want to say about policy? I know, yeah, we have policies that are for first reads coming up. And we also have policies that are for second read and adoption. Anything you want to say about them?
Yeah, I don't have anything for the second read unless someone has a specific question. But for the first read, let me go through them very quickly, the school safety plans. It was a, it's an update from 2019, I think it's a little bit of an overkill. But you know, if you're going to have one, I guess it's a good, it's good to have it very thorough. We have a district grade school safety plan, we have building level emergency response plans. But this is sort of the package of it all, and both these things it's required. And Mike, you also thought it was, right? The drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, it's a, it's a required policy, it was revised in 2019. Now it's a new revision, it's just basically a couple of changes. I didn't think anything that was significant in there. The same with the equal employment opportunity. Well, actually, this is a significant rewrite, it was just rewritten also in 2020, it's a required policy. Bosie's pretty much wrote it verbatim. And because of, it was a very sensitive subject, again, our superintendent Poland has looked at it, I think, our legal counsel and they're happy with it, so we're happy with it. Very similar conversation with the sexual harassment in the workplace. They changed the title from of district personnel to workplace, but it's a complete rewrite. So please take a good cut on that one, it's required policy recently revised in 2019. But this is a. Because of the sensitivity of the subject nowadays, I think Bosie's, whether a complete rewrite is the correct way to go. Employee and medical examinations, it's an easy one, most of it was just a few deletions by Bosie. So unless anyone has any more questions, of course, always give me a call during the week.
I noticed on the school safety plan, there was an accommodation for having a student on the safety, on the committee. Do we have a student on the committee?
We currently do not.
Okay, I, I wondered, because it said the student, you know, shouldn't be privy to confidential material. And I thought that would be very difficult to be in a meeting where you had to sift out. Whether or not you could talk about something. Being cognizant that, that the student shouldn't hear a particular or see a particular plan or how this works. I thought that might be a little difficult. And whereas one respect, great to have a kid there, on the other hand, makes it difficult, you know, I, I just.
Well, we don't have them on the committee, but I think that the students are, are very good about giving us feedback when things arise. That they don't quite understand or they have questions about. You know, as early as our elementary students and as great as our high school seniors. You know, so they're not afraid to give us questions. Sometimes it's in the form of asking mom or dad something or, or saying something to mom or dad. And that feedback comes to us that way as it relates to safety and security. But there are so many things to your point that are, you know, so safety sensitive. You don't openly permit or promote what's happening for fear of what could occur. So we don't have a student at this point in time, but it's not to say we won't allow or solicit student input from time to time.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to public access. Tina, is there anyone who wanted to speak to us tonight?
No, there's not.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, motion please to approve the consent agenda, Tina and Linda. The consent agenda on your agenda goes from page one through page four. Any discussion, questions? I know a lot of, a lot of you get things clarified ahead of time and that's good. All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Motion is carried. Number six and page four. Policies, a motion please to approve the policies listed below. Paul and Jason. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the policies on the second read. Motion is carried. All right, we move to member requests, comments and discussion at this time. Linda, I would ask you to inform the board about your excursion to Albany. Where the legislative for county.
Well, on the fifteenth, six of us attended from four county, four county schools. And there were several of us from individual districts and two there from Wayne Fingal Exposies as well. And there were a number of things that were covered. And we were given or was emailed to us the four county newsletter. And they do have a couple of photos in there from our meeting with Senator Pam, Pam Helming. In the newsletter, it did give an overview of what was, what went on. But I wanted to just touch on the topics, which you were aware of because you had already gotten some of the information about what the state proposals were. NISBA certainly was the organizer for this. And one of the things we touched on immediately was state foundation aid being at a better funding level. But however, they are still using the device of set aside funding. Which really restricts the use of a certain number of dollars in districts. Where they may be better spent elsewhere. And that's, it's a device that's been used in the past and it's still not really appreciated. So that was one of the things also under funding and programs, universal breakfast for and lunch program for all students in New York State. Was promoted as well as having a fund balance percentage raised from six to eight percent area rather than the lower four percent. Certainly that would have been helpful during COVID and, and going forward, it would really help districts a lot. Another area was electric bus proposal concerns was brought up. Said the cost of an electric bus is four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars apiece. There isn't really good information at this point. Page that's given for each charge of a bus that they have. And that each of these buses needs inside storage. Each of these buses needs a heavier weight lift to be able to be serviced. And the big question of, is the existing electric grid going to be able to handle? All of these buses going out throughout the state. The other thing that we were focusing on was concerns about staffing shortages. Civil service categories haven't really been updated in a number of years. And that has created issues with hiring personnel across the board. And sometimes it actually prevents districts from hiring folks that need certain skills. In addition to what the civil service category includes. Of course, we did not mention school bus driver issues because pretty much everyone's aware of that issue. So they knew that that certainly was at the forefront. And then mental health issues and the need for resources was emphasized. And I have to say, in no matter who we sat down and had face-to-face conversations with. The representatives were listening or in two cases, they weren't able to meet with us, but they had a staff member that. They all took notes, whether they were the representatives or the staff members. And they did request that. Each of us on the legislative branches and committees and in the districts. We do have an opportunity to give them more information about issues that we're concerned about. So if there's anything that any of the directors or any building administrators feel would be helpful. Information about our district to help promote some of these concerns. I would be more than happy to. Send that on to them because they really want to help.
Anyone have questions for Linda? Paul?
Linda, was a broadband internet discussed at all?
Yes, that's something that was really had more emphasis last year. This year, because of some of the things that have been discussed in the legislature and through state ed. There wasn't as much of a, a need on the part of, of the representatives going to push that as much. But it still is an issue that they're aware of. Good question.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Linda, thank you for taking a day out of your busy life with your babies. Going to Albany and for us and representing us there. Is there any other board member who has something they want to bring up to the rest of the members? All right, well, hearing none, is there good news tonight? I'm going to save good news.
Well, I'll jump in there, yeah, so we've had some very good success, as you know. Recently from some of our student athletes. So today we had two, two student athletes go to the state qualifiers for track. I don't have an update to share with you, but I thought that that was great. I, I know that there in the future, we'll be bringing some sectional champions to you to recognize them. Mr. Blankenberg did jump off the meeting. But I do know that we have two young men that are going down representing us in the state wrestling tournament this weekend. They left this morning, so they will, they got down there, had something to eat and then got some practice. So they'll kick off tomorrow. And with respect to a state tournament for downhill skiing, we will be represented there as well. So you know, that's a very good showing when you think about the number of student athletes around the state. The fact that we're represented either in qualifiers or in state finals participation. So that's something that we can all be very proud of and I'll give you some more updates hopefully on the March ninth. Give you specific references and a few repeat sectional champions. So I'm sure the familiar faces and names to all of you. So that is good news.
Thank you, yes. All right, that concludes our agenda. At this point, we'll, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
With Mrs. Collier, we do need to go into executive session, but we won't be doing any business.
You're right, I'm sorry, I'm, I've got my slip here and I totally ignored it. I'll ask please for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the history, the employment history of a specific employee. A motion please. Linda and John, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. I will tell those of you listening in that we will return to open session after executive session. But we will not be doing any more business. So if you want to sign off, rest assured, you won't be missing anything. So at this time, I bid you good night if you're leaving and the rest of you, I'll see you in executive session. Thank you. Thank you, we are out of executive session and back in regular session. We have completed our agenda, Linda?
Like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Linda moves, Tina seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor of adjourning? Ah, then we, did I see you, Shelley?
Nope, you didn't see me.
Did, you want to adjourn?
Sure.
Okay, good, thank you, we're all in favor then, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Bye, y'all.